Councilmember Agaramati?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Present.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here. And with that, I'll go ahead and open comments from the public.
Cisson?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Cook and council. My name's Yvonne Bowers, B-O-W-E-R-S, and I'm here as -- oh, hello. I'm here tonight as the president of the Sonoma Valley Women's Club. I have Jeanne Miller with me, wherever she is, our historian. And I'd just like to tell you that thanks to your support, we have -- our property, our clubhouse at 574 First Street East, has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's been a long slog, about a year and a half getting there, but you wrote a letter, the Native Sons and Daughters of the Golden West, the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation, the Sonoma Valley Historical Society, and of course, the Women's Club all wrote letters in support, and we have been listed as of January 7th. I'd like to turn it over just for a second to Jeanne Miller.
A little more than a second, let me see. It's going to be a quick history lesson, though, about the Women's Club. It was founded in 1901, but there was no clubhouse, and they rented space in Union Hall and the Oddfellows Hall, and then for several years in Shawkins Quarters up above the -- and so in about nine -- now, about 1911, one of the ladies said, "Well, we've been doing good for the whole community for 10 years. Why don't we do good for our members?" And so they started looking for property, and they bought the lot from Mrs. Poppy for $450, and paid that off in a year, and then started raising money and having all sorts of entertainments and different things to raise money. And by 1915, they hired Brainerd Jones, who was a very famous architect in Petaluma. He had built their Women's Club, too. And he designed something for the building, and then they raised some more money, and in 1916, they started building, and it was $3,885 to build the building, and they had $1,200, so they borrowed the rest from the Native Sons. And by September of 1916, the building was done, and they had a grand opening party for the whole public in September of that year. And it's still there, and we probably should have another grand party.
Thank you.
So I also forgot to thank Diana Painter, who's a historian, historic architect, and she did our preparation of our file for us. You also have a councilmember, Agaramati, who is one of -- a member of the Women's Club. So we just wanted to say thank you very much for your support, and --
I'm a woman, so I'm a --
Did I say councilman?
No. I'm just, you know, confirming that.
Don't confuse me, Madeline, you know. So we just want to say thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Patricia Cullenin. I'd like to comment on a resolution that's coming before you on your consent calendar. This is in support of that resolution, for an application to the preserve --
Can I ask Legal on that?
Can I?
It's okay, because it's on the consent. Okay.
I checked.
I'll be back.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Wagner?
Hello. Jack Wagner, 540 Fano Lane. I want to talk to you guys about something I brought up a while ago, or not too long ago, but regarding Sonoma Clean Power. The last time we had this come up was when we passed, or when the former city council passed a resolution to support an amendment to a bill that was going through the state that would have prevented ours and Marin Clean Energy from expanding and requiring this opt-in rather than the opt-out. What I brought then was the idea of incorporating Lake and Mendocino Counties into Sonoma Clean Power. We have -- our mayor and Mayor Protem are the sitting member and alternate for the board. What I'm asking is maybe that you guys just bring this up next time. I'm going to try to get to a county board of supervisors meeting, but their comments are at like 8:00 in the morning, county admin, but I want to bring that up to our district supervisor, Susan Goran, who's also on the board. When Marin Clean Energy recently incorporated Napa in, it was projected it would save Marin customers between 1% and 2% of their bill. This is also something very attractive for Lake and Mendocino County, because it prevents them from having to start up a similar project themselves. They can just join in on ours. The geysers, which we use quite a bit, actually reside in Lake and Mendocino and Sonoma County. So to me, it just kind of seems like a perfect fit and relationship to move forward with that. So that's what I'm asking you guys to consider, and thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And I'll remind, we have a Sonoma Clean Power meeting on 8:45 this Thursday, and it's open to the public.
Awesome. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Cook and council and staff. My name's Lynn Marie DeVincent. I live at 65 Guadalajara Drive. I know you've been in closed session, so I don't know if you heard that Punxsutawney, Tony Phil did see his shadow, so six more weeks of winter. But I also found out that he has a rival called Staten Island Chuck, and he did not see his shadow, so they're saying it's in early spring after they dig out of the blizzard. Anyway, so I knew that you want to know about that. And speaking of delays, I wanted to remind you that the Tri-Park Committee for the Three Mobile Home Parks in Sonoma have been shepherding our revision for Sonoma's rent stabilization ordinance for going on five years now, and we're looking forward to the next step, which we're told will be the scheduling of a public hearing. The representatives of the Tri-Park Committee will be contacting each of you soon to review the importance of this revision for seniors and affordable housing in Sonoma. So we'd love to move forward when staff feels it's time, and perhaps Mayor Cook and council could request an update on this revision project and help move it along. We'd be most grateful. And on another item, I'm just curious, when there are closed-session council meetings, is there ever a time when the minutes become available to the public? And if so, how would that process work?
Okay. I'll direct that to city staff after.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Want to thank all of you for being here. Quickly, want to apologize to Ms. Agaramati, Ms. Hundley, and Mr. Edwards. I had not a chance to get ahold of you in regards to what I am about to put forth this evening. I did get a chance to talk to your two colleagues, Mayor Cook and Mayor Protem, Lori Gallion, and also the city manager, and Gail. What I have is an issue with the current management of the little gem of a dog park right behind us. In the way that the new board members have garnered a elusive sense of ownership, so much so that they have gone out of their way in retaliation to some recent activity to post a new sign without having it even be okayed by the city manager, not allowing non-neutered male dogs older than six months in the park, which is not the issue. As a professional dog trainer of 20 years, the issue is not whether a dog is altered or unaltered, but whether a dog has been trained to be well-rounded in all aspects of dog life in conjunction with society as we humans know it. So I have quite a few bones to pick. One of them is open containers in that dog park. I don't think that it should fall under the park open container policy, which is Sonoma Park's 9:00 AM to dusk. If you are too busy drinking and partying, you're not paying attention to your dog. In addition to, some of the members of this board have aggressive dogs. They ask other people to leave the park to accommodate their little social clique. They protect other members of their social clique, and it's going to snowball, and I would hate to see that affect the city of Sonoma. It doesn't bode well. Visitors come to use that park. I don't know if you've seen Arnold Drive, but that's a whole nother mess. It's mud. A lot of people don't like to use that park. The one out on Highway 12 is often closed under rainy conditions, which we haven't had, but the fact remains that this park is leased by this organization, and they make rules now with the new board members as they see fit without having it come through the council or the manager, the city manager. So I will email you all. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your job.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And does city staff at this time want to answer the question on minutes on closed session, or would you -- Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. The law does not require that minutes be taken of closed sessions. So the first issue is there are no such minutes. The councils can take minutes if they desire, but they remain confidential, and they remain confidential, to my knowledge, permanently. They can be ordered disclosed by court order, but short of that, they are confidential documents.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could you ask our city attorney to explain under what conditions you can have a closed session? Maybe people need to be reminded.
Yes. Mr. Walters?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The conditions under which the council can move into an executive or closed session are fairly limited. They pertain to issues of litigation, personnel, and property, typically the sale or lease of town property. They also can be held to discuss employment and bargaining, collective bargaining agreements. These are the kind of things that the state legislators have determined if discussed in open session would place the city or the town at a significant bargaining disadvantage. And you can well imagine how that would be if the town, when council was required to discuss litigation that was filed against the town, and in open session, you had to discuss questions of settlement that was being proposed. The plaintiff's lawyers would be lined up in their first row with their tape recorders on, of course, and the city would be simply unable to properly guard the city's fisk under those types of circumstances. So it's those types of things, they're delicate, they're sensitive issues, that the council is allowed to move in closed session, talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walters. Item four, consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Does any council members --
Have a question?
Yes. Madeline?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On 4B, I just needed to get advice on this. I wasn't in on the council then, so I would have to abstain. Is that an --
Actually, I could go back to Legal, but you don't have to.
If you want, you can abstain. Just noted for the record, and that will be reflected in the minutes.
Thank you. And also on 4C, I just wanted to make a correction. It's on the Sonoma County Health Action and Sonoma Valley Health Roundtable. And also, can I refer to 4C? It says the same thing, so that just needs to be corrected.
Can we make note of that and continue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hundley?
Similarly, I was also not at the November 13th, as that was before we were sworn in. So does that mean the three of us should abstain, because then we couldn't approve it?
That's interesting. Hmm. There's three of you that weren't there. I don't know. Oh, my goodness. Theoretically, you weren't there. I don't know what the rule is, actually.
You know, I was always told that it doesn't matter, because I voted many times on minutes that I wasn't there, as long as I was the one present during the vote-taking. And I know that Sonoma Clean Power, I voted on the minutes when I wasn't there in place of Steve Barbos.
That sounds like a great rule.
Does any other council members have any discussion? Let's go to public. Is there any member of public that would like to pull an item? And if you'd like to pull the item, then we can discuss.
Oh, not pull. I'm sorry. No. Yes. I'm speaking to it, not pulling it. Patricia Cullenin. I wanted to add to the support for this item. This is an application that the city is going to make. It will give us not only national recognition, but signage, and in addition, the initiative will strengthen Sonoma's efforts to support, find supportive funding for, from the National Endowment to the humanities. And we locally have certified local government that will give us further strength in asking for grants from the State Office of Historic Preservation. I think it's very positive for local tourism, for the preservation of Sonoma's history and buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patricia. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Gallion?
Patricia, you did not announce what item you were actually speaking to.
4E.
Yes, but this is for the public. You might want to just say what the name of it is.
Item 4E, Preserve America's Communities Application.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the consent counter? If not, I'll bring it back to council and look for discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I would like to go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar. Yes, that's it.
I'll second it.
City clerk, could we go ahead and do a roll call? Vote?
Councilmember Agaramati?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Present.
Councilmember Hundley?
Yes.
Mayor Cook?
Yes. Number five, consent counter for the successor agency. All items listed on the consent counter may be, are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public would like to remove for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Do I have any questions from the council members on the successor agency? I'll go out to public. If not, we'll come back to the council and look for a council discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the consent calendar, agenda order for the city council as successor agency.
I'll second it.
Okay. City clerk, could we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Agaramati? Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Yes.
Mayor Cook?
Yes. We do not have any public hearings scheduled tonight, and we will go into number seven, our regular calendar for the city council, 7A. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to authorize Value of the Moon Certified Farmer's Market to continue management of the Tuesday night farmer's market in the Plaza for a term to be cited by the council. Councilmember Hundley?
As many of you know, I have a business that has been a vendor in the past with the market, and I have put in application for this summer, so as such, I will be recusing myself.
Thank you. We'll come and get you in a couple hours.
See ya.
Sit in the well. City staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. The Tuesday night market on the Plaza has been managed by the Valley of the Moon Certified Farmer's Market, which is a nonprofit organization. They've managed it since 2011. They were first granted the management authority by the city council in December of 2010, when they submitted a proposal in response to an RFP which was issued by the city. Specific details of the market are considered and basically decided on by the CSSEC upon the middle of the Plaza Use Permit application. Initially, the Environmental Commission, CSSEC, established the subcommittee to monitor the activities of the market and their compliance with the conditions of approval. Because of the extraordinary cooperation and successful management demonstrated by the Certified Farmer's Market management, the CSSEC recently disbanded that subcommittee because they felt that the level of stringent monitoring of the event was no longer necessary. So the Certified Farmer's Market has submitted a proposal for extension to the council to grant them a six-year term of management, which would continue through the 2020 season. And we're bringing this forward to you. Staff supports the renewal of the management authorization, but we feel that the six-year term should be considered by the council and be under council's discretion as far as the actual length of the term. Bill Darden, which is the market manager, is in the audience, and I think you should direct your questions to him, and he can make a presentation on the overall management.
Is there any questions for the council before we go to public? Vice Mayor Gallion?
City manager, Jevonato, in the past, the renewal period has been how many years? In other words, is it two years, three years?
I will ask Gator.
It was initially granted for two years, and then it was re- granted again for an additional two-year period.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions for staff? If not, I'll go ahead and take it out to public.
There is a correction. I am president of the board, and Chris Welch is the manager of the market. Mayor Cook and city council staff, good evening. We're here to answer any questions that you might have of us. We are looking forward to another very successful market for our 15th season. So we're here to answer whatever. One of the reasons we wanted to have a longer period is because it's a lot easier for us to run the market and to report to the CSSEC at whatever term is deemed, and give them an annual report rather than to -- and that's what we would do. We would give you a report midterm or at the end of the term of the market to answer any questions and give you an idea of what we're doing and what we propose for the future. We did, I think it was an eight-page proposal that we sent that was pretty concise in all the things that we intend to do with the market. And Chris is here to answer any of the questions that you might have as well.
Yeah. And what we'll do is we'll continue with public, and then when we bring it back, we'll go ahead and, if there's any questions from the council for discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? If not, I'll bring it back for discussion of the council. And I guess I do have a question. If we went ahead and went back to --
You'll need to reopen the public hearing to allow these comments.
Okay. I'll reopen the public hearing. If we went for only two years, how would -- what's the difference between two years and six years, as far as based on?
Well, we were granted the two-year term originally, and we then got granted an additional two years without -- you guys voted us five-zip, and we had no problem. I mean, if the term was four years, we're fine. We just thought it would be best to have a longer term, so we can do the business and conduct the market the way we have been successfully with no issues and bringing you a better market each time. So every time that you give us the time to do this, it just makes it easier for us to coordinate everything that we do for the market.
Is there any other questions for councilmember Edwards? Oh, Vice Mayor Gallion?
So I have a couple of questions, Bill. The -- so in reading through the packet today, it shows on the -- one of my concerns is the security. And I know that the sheriff's department has subsidized part of the security, and they're no longer able to do that. What kind of -- what are you looking to do with that? I see you have some staff members that are --
I don't know whether or not you know this, but we pretty much self-patrol the market. We have -- we're monitored with walkie-talkies. There's six of them. And personally, myself, I walk the market. After I open the market, I walk the market. And I'm proud to say that in all the term, the time that we've been at that market, we've never had an incident of any kind. So -- and that's because of our security, as far as our self-security. Now, we had a meeting with Chief Sackett, and he is trying to give us, he's taking away certain things to make it affordable. We are a nonprofit market. Now, if it gets to be too much, and it gets to be $5,000, like we were talking, I think now it's come down a little bit, and we can afford to do that. But Chief Sackett has been very generous in the affordability of this, to be able to give us the kind of support that the police gives us.
Okay. And with that, so when you took over the market, how many vendors did you have?
That's a Chris question.
I wasn't there the first year, so...
No. That's true. Let me go back. When we first took over the market, we had 51 vendors.
And how many do you have now?
We have 64.
In the time that I have been managing, which is three years, it's maintained a fairly consistent, a little bit higher than that. We have about 76 actual 10-by-10 stalls, but some vendors use two. So -- and it fluctuates because of farmers who are seasonal and various other things. But a reasonable number of vendors, you could say, is in the high 50s, 55 to 60. Now, on any given night, there's not that many there, but I'm not sure if that answers your question?
Well, it goes into further to my question, which, what percentage are actually farmers in the Tuesday night market?
So although you would not see this on every night, because like I said, farmers are seasonal, and some, you know, our cherry vendors there from May to June and then the blueberry. But it's about a third, it's about a third farmers, so about 20, 21. It's about a third ready-to-eat food vendors, and then about a third is both artisans, service providers, and packaged food vendors. It's pretty consistently been that since I've been managing, anyway.
Yeah, I may have a couple more questions later, but I'll defer to you, Lori.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
So I guess, you know, I've been here from the beginning, when you started under this new management, and I have just seen an incredible transition from where we were to where we are today.
Thank you.
I have confidence in this organization. I know that you respond to complaints. These were all things, you opened up the process for vendors to actually come forward. You have an online presence. All of this has been what the council has asked for, and in maintaining, you know, this particular agreement, all of that will stay in place.
Yes, absolutely. Transparency.
Right. How do you see yourselves growing in the next three years? Do you see yourselves growing? Do you see yourselves maintaining the same? What is the actual direction of the board itself as to what they wish to achieve for a farmer's market in our community?
Well, first of all, we're a farmer's market, and I'm the first one to say that always. We really can't grow any more than we are now, because we don't have the space, number one. So we are, we manage what we have as best we can, and I don't believe that we will be able to grow any more than where we are at. We are going to improve the market always by creating different venues. In the proposal, there was something about -- always by creating different venues. In the proposal, there was something about having a food court at the rear. The board, when we brought it to the board, they really didn't like the food court. They like it open the way it has been. So that's pretty much, we're going to pretty much stay as we are as far as the new, the season coming up and future.
Right. And the other area that I thought was consistent with what you were proposing to do was the diversity of groups that you actually represent there and the opportunity for youth to have their particular arena. There is music, there is entertainment. It is maintained. You've incorporated some of the areas of the auditorium when special events are going on. All of this is maintained. So I do not find any issue with that. I would be concerned if you were going to grow the entertainment or the live music element any further because of some of the feedback that I have received. So what would you say to that answer?
Sure. I'm going to jump forward here. One of the things we pride ourselves in, especially the board especially, we're a startup market. We give people who are entrepreneurs who are trying to get started in a business, we give them the opportunity to do this. So we're very proud of that issue because we've had lots of successful vendors that have been picked up by Whole Foods, who is our platinum sponsor. And I think three of our vendors were picked up by Whole Foods. A produce and a granola gal, one of our granola vendors. So that's one part of the growth of the market. And as far as the entertainment is concerned, we are going to keep it pretty much exactly the way it is. It's already booked for the season. We're not letting anything more come in. We're always getting called by young enthusiastic musicians and there'll be a busking area. And we're not opposed to people coming to the market and doing that because it gives the youth an opportunity to do that.
Okay. And the last question, I understand towards the latter part of the farmers market, you tested the wine tasting and sales. Could you tell me a little bit more about how that came forward?
I'm going to let Chris answer that question.
Thank you.
The Sonoma Valley Vintners and Growers Alliance approached the board of directors early last year because the laws had changed with the state that would allow them to offer wine tasting and sales. The board put it back on them to research everything, make sure permits were okay, present us with the proposal. They were open but skeptical. And so we came up with the plan, because they were willing to do that, of allowing them to test it in October, near the end of the market when it's slower, and to be present right in front of the managers table where we could keep an eye on it and just see where it was. We also enlisted the support and approval of the CSSEC to allow them to do that. And the feedback from patrons, the CSSEC, and other vendors was pretty universally good in terms of their presence at the market. We expect, I talked to them today because our application deadline was Sunday. So I talked to them today and we expect them to reapply and they would like to continue to do it, which of course will be subject to us talking to the CSSEC as a part of our permit. But we felt like, the board felt like, with some reservations about, you know, how it was done and making sure that they abided by liquor laws and how it would impact the family nature of the market, the board also felt like it was a really good fit. Because if you talk about a farmers market and farming and agriculture in the valley, it would be crazy to not realize that wineries and vintners are an important part of that. And so we were excited within the constraints of trying to be sure that it would work for our community and our patrons to have them onboard. And we feel like it was quite a success. And we've gotten pretty much universal positive feedback. Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much. And my last comment would be, if the council, I mean, this is just my idea, if the council would have to adopt it, is that your term would be three years with renewable, three years with an annual report each year. And that's something that you would be amenable to as well?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Matt?
Yeah, Councilmember Agamonte.
I, let me see. On your page seven of nine, vendor satisfaction, it says here that you intend to continue to solicit input and work to make the market as successful as possible for the vendors. So my question is, how do you do that? Do you have a survey that you do? You speak to each vendor? How are you, how are you able to collect that data?
Absolutely correct. That is exactly what we do. And one of the things that has made us a successful market is the fact that we have not increased our fees in the past four years. Now, fees are going to go up this year straight across the board, but they're still minimal considering all the other markets. And basically, we had to do that because the state of California SB 1871 was a bill that was passed and we needed to take a look at that. And the board felt that we have been absolutely on top of fees and we haven't raised them. So now we're going to have to, but they're minimal. And the board felt it was time for us to do that. And I don't think it's going to affect people or vendors at all. And Chris can tell us what those fees are because he's got them more than I do. You want to tell them what those fees are?
Yes. And to answer your question further though, too, on specific items, we do survey the vendors sometimes to find out, for instance, how the city party impacted their sales and how they felt about it. We also have adopted a very open-door policy such that vendors can come to us. And one other thing is we have two vendors on the board of directors. So they form a very good conduit for getting information back. Now, the interesting thing is that, as in any group like this, some vendors are reluctant to step forward or tell us what they think or whatever. But because we have vendors on the board, the scuttlebutt gets around. And so we have good feedback mechanisms in place as well as surveying them at times. To answer Bill's question, the fees are very reasonable. For instance, the Friday market charges, and many other markets in our region, charge a percentage of sales. We do not. We have a flat fee. It ranges from a low, the new fee, okay, which was a $5 across the board increase, ranges from a low of $25 a week for some of the vendors to a high of $50 a week.
Thank you. Any other-
I have one more. It seems very reasonable. I was a candidate when you were first here, Mr. Darden, with this presentation. And you were talking about wine tasting and sales with that trial period that you had. And I am chair of a committee under the Health Roundtable, Sonoma Valley Health Roundtable, which is dealing with adolescent binge drinking here in the valley. So, you know, this, I think when you first addressed this, introduced it, you said that there would be security and that's something that, you know, I think that's one of the ways that we can help to control these issues. So I appreciate that. And of course, we're going to be continuing with this committee, hoping that we will be able to just decrease that by about 5%.
Thank you. Addressing the security at that particular booth, when you come to wine taste, they register you, number one. There's two people registering you. You come into one part of the tent or the 10-by-10 and you taste, then you go next door to buy. It's sealed. There is no corkage anywhere. And before you leave, they check the registration again for you to exit. So there's two in front, two at the rear, and it's open. Because when they had it bottlenecked, it was kind of like a corral, it was, it didn't work. So we made the recommendation, you guys should have a flow and have it monitored. And again, it's right in front of our managers table. So there's really no way for a young person to get into that, to the tent.
Thank you so much. That's all of my questions.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Edwards.
So a couple more questions. What would you say the average attendance is at a Tuesday market?
That's a good one. This market has a life of its own. It, I monitor it, like I say, when I open the market at 5:30, I then make announcements and all the rest of it, I have an open mic session. At 5:30, the market's minimal. By 6, 6:30, I would say that your average is probably anywhere from 900 to 1,000 people. And on the opening market last year, we probably had 1,500.
Then my follow-up question on that is, what does the market do to be responsible? We have a lot of discussions when I was in the planning commission and with city council now about ADA issues. What are we doing to accommodate people with disabilities in the market? In other words, when the market is in place, we take the handicap spaces that are in city hall and they disappear.
We have one handicap spot that we negotiated with the city to be given to us at 4 o'clock because city closes at 5. And they agreed, there is a sign that says Tuesday is the only time you have to-
I understand that.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, what are you doing to provide handicap access to the market as it's been growing over the years? When we have somebody bring a proposal to the city to build something, or they change their building or remodel their building, they have to add handicap parking spaces. And these are people that are here all the time. They're here every day, seven days a week, five days a week, whatever. What does the market do to accommodate that in any way?
I can't answer that question.
Thank you.
Do you go, if you can answer it, please do.
There is still at least one handicap space, which is right at the base of the market.
On the street.
Yeah, on the street. And as well as other ones around the plaza. And the other thing is when we do anything like, for instance, regarding the music or anything, we don't really have much of this, but we do keep in mind that people with wheelchairs and other disabilities could be in the market. And so we try to make sure that pathways are clear, there's no obstructions or anything. I keep track of that. But as far as parking, it's what's out there already. It's just we've taken away one of those spaces.
Okay. And then when you talk about surveying your vendors, have you done any surveys of the businesses in town? The restaurants or the, when we have these vendors that come in that compete with folks that have brick and mortar on the plaza, restaurants, et cetera, have you had any discussions, surveys, meetings, or anything else with any of those folks?
We have not, although we do encourage input. And obviously, in a small town, we certainly hear from them. And I handled an issue a woman had with some people parking and worked out with her what made sense to, they were parking in for the market in her spaces, which are clearly not, you know, they're for her business. And so she and I had a dialogue and I made some suggestions about what she could do and told her to let me know. But we have not formally surveyed the vendors around the plaza, no.
Thank you.
I can add to that. One of the vendors, there's a city, there's an aftermarket city party at Murphy's every Tuesday. And I have talked to the Swiss Hotel in talking to management or the owner. And they absolutely get super busy during the market. When the market starts to close, their restaurant gets busier. All of the, all of the places that I've talked to, Town Square, of course, is a bar, but people around the-
Some people say that about Murphy's and the Swiss as well.
There you go. Yeah. But I think what we bring to the community is more of a family atmosphere for people to come to the market. Since I instigated more food vendors, and I take a survey of this, I see less picnics on the lawn and I see more people spending their money with the vendors rather than bringing food to the market, which is good for this community and good for those vendors.
So to add to that then, what percentage would you say of these fast food vendors are from Sonoma and how many are from outside of Sonoma or the valley for that matter?
Well, Chris can answer that question. Off the top of my head, I couldn't give you a number, but I will tell you that the selection process is very heavily oriented towards local businesses. And the more local, the better. And that's a big part of how they make their decisions. In terms of the food, the ready-to-eat food vendors that are at the market, I would just guess, and I could answer this by just looking, but I would guess that about half of them are definitely based in Sonoma.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for, yeah, thank you. And since I opened up public comment, is there any other public comment before I close? Mr. Wagner?
Wagner, Jack Wagner, 540 Fanta Lane. Huge supporter of the farmers market. Just give you some anecdotes. I do host people from around the world on occasion and they marvel at our farmers market. If you're looking for a straightforward all-farmers produce market, we have Friday morning. But this is something so unique to most people. I think they've done a great job. I love it down there. And just totally in support of extending their lease on it.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Is there any other public comment? If not, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember Edwards.
So I'm in favor of, you know, over the years that I've been involved in the community planning and otherwise, I'm supportive of the market continuing, the current management. And I think you guys have done an admirable job. I'd be inclined to only go two years because I think that's, that gives everybody an opportunity to make a decision if something goes wrong, something goes haywire. You never know when a security issue is going to come up. I feel that it's important that we don't just give too much leash to any organization, not picking on you guys, but just on anyone. I think it's prudent that we don't kick in for six years. I would recommend to.
Councilmember Agamonte.
In an offer in the way of a motion, I certainly would second that unless there are other questions.
Yeah, I'd like to do a straw poll among the council members and then we can go ahead and do a motion. Vice Mayor Gallion, do you have any input?
Well, I feel in deference to this particular group that I feel they have definitely proved themselves in the two-year cycle. I, for one, would like to see it go to three years. I feel that at any point, if there's something that we have a problem with, we can certainly bring it forward. And we have that leeway, do we not, City Manager Jevanato?
Yes, you would.
Right. I feel that I understand the continuity. I was just talking to a young farmer at the Grange on Sunday morning in the breakfast. And this means a lot to the vendors, the farmers in particular, to know that, you know, they have a continuing space over a period of time. Now, I understand your process is application, but the more they have performed there, the more their track record, the better the recruitment is to actually keep them consistent in the local area. And to me, the focus is the farmers, what we're trying to do in healthy community. And I believe this would actually be a boost to go ahead and help with retention by making it expand to another year. That's my personal belief and why I suggested three years.
And before we call for a vote, I'd like to say thank you also. I love the farmers market and I do listen to the constituents. Some people say it's not a farmers market. Some people say it's more of a party. I like to think that it is both. I'm fourth-generation farmer. I love the fact that people can come there and sell. I do understand that I would like to see it more of a local event for the local vendors, but I understand that it depends on what you call local and to have it successful. So that's your guys' deal. I would never tell somebody how to run the market. But I would be inclined to say that I agree with Edwards and Gallion. Two or three years, I could go either way. I'm not, I would not support six years just because I think it's a simple process to come back through. So if somebody wants to make a motion or a little bit of discussion, I would be okay with two or three.
Well, the reason I bring up two is because it offers, you know, there was a RFP for this item back when because of some dissatisfaction with the previous folks. And I want to keep that competition possibility open because somebody may come up with a better idea. And I think that's-
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Well, I'll put it, I'll make my motion to authorize Valley of the Moon Certified Farmers Market to continue management of the Tuesday market in the plaza for a term of two years. Market to continue management of the Tuesday market in the plaza for a term of two years. And leave it at that.
Is there a second?
And I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Is there any more discussion before City Clerk calls for a roll call vote? We'll call for a roll call vote. Oh, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Gallion has a question.
I think I've made it pretty strong that I'm up for three years. I believe in this team. I've seen them work. I just want to say that if I do go ahead and support this motion for two years, it's not that I don't believe that three years would be adequate as well.
Thank you. City Clerk, can I call for a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion.
Yes.
Councilmember Agamonte.
Yes.
Mayor Cook.
Yes. With that, our roll, a four-to-o vote for a two-year extension. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and we'll move to 7B, discussion, consideration, and possible action relating to the establishment of a tobacco retailer's licensing program. And before I call upon the City Manager, sorry. I will repeat 7B is discussion, consideration, and possible action relating to the establishment of a tobacco retailer's licensing program. And before I call upon the City Manager, how I would like to conduct this is the council members will be free to discuss items with city staff. You don't have to call upon the mayor during the discussion part because I think there's going to be a lot of questions. And then we'll discuss on the matrix after you give your report. City Staff.
Thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. First, I'd like to introduce Associate City Attorney Valerie Postol. I will open up the discussion with a brief staff report and, and City Attorney Postol will kind of walk you through the matrix that you have in your agenda packet. And essentially, what we'd like to do is kind of take each, each issue separately for discussion. So with that, I will do a brief staff report. Back in the mid-2014, the city council opened the discussion of establishing a tobacco retailer's licensing program within the city limits of Sonoma. This was the outcome of a presentation by the American Lung Association on the potential options and impacts related to the regulation of smoking in Sonoma. The regulation of tobacco retailers is the first step in an effort to reduce the sale of tobacco and smoking paraphernalia to minors. Working collaboratively with the city attorney's office and members of the public health community, staff presented a draft of the Tobacco Retailer Licensing, or TRL, ordinance to the council for a brief introduction back in October of 2014, but tabled, but tabled the item until the new council was seated. Tonight, staff is presenting the draft of the ordinance with an expanded format for council discussion. Staff has created a matrix of the sections contained in the ordinance to assist in the review of the proposed ordinance. This matrix contains the optional provisions outside the boilerplate language contained in the base ordinance. These optional provisions, which we also refer to them as plug-ins, are for council discussion and consideration and should be viewed individually and measured on their community merit and/or business impact. These individual sections may be included, modified, or deleted by the council based on council preference. Staff is seeking council directions on these plug-ins prior to the formal introduction of the ordinance at a future meeting. The final draft ordinance will ultimately implement a program requiring tobacco retailers to obtain a tobacco retailer license from the city. The annual license fee of $246 collected under the program will fund the compliance monitoring program, which will include a youth decoy sting operation coordinated by the police chief and the sheriff's department. According to the information obtained from the State Board of Equalization, there are currently 16 businesses in the city licensed by the state to sell tobacco products. Each business was sent a notice of this meeting and a summary of the major provisions contained in the, in the draft ordinance. Some provisions of this ordinance as currently drafted may have significant future impacts on existing businesses, which include briefly, number one, all existing tobacco retailers would be gathered grandfathered in. However, they would not be allowed to transfer the license from one person to another or from one location to, to another. Again, as this is currently written, you will be looking at each one of those provisions tonight to direct staff whether that provision will continue to stand in the ordinance. Number two, the draft ordinance as written would prohibit the establishment of any new tobacco retailers within the city. The draft ordinance restricts the number of licenses in the city to one for each 1,000 inhabitants of the city, placing a cap at 10. As I said, there are currently 16 grandfathered licensed locations, so no new licenses could be issued. No new license may be issued and no existing license renewed within 1,000 feet of youth populated area. This results in eliminating any location within the city where a new tobacco retailer could exist. Contained within the ordinance are penalties, fees, and other administrative remedies, which include suspension and revocation of permit to sell tobacco products for a period of up to one year. And smoke shops would be prohibited. So at this, at this time, I'm going to ask Associate Attorney Valerie Postol to walk you through each one of these provisions. And again, I would suggest that the format might be that you consider taking a straw vote of each provision as we're walking, you know, as we're going through this might help at the end. And if you, if you have one or two provisions that you're not quite certain of, you can essentially hold off on taking a, a vote or come back, we can come back to it for additional discussion. But that might, we've got a number of provisions in this ordinance or plug-ins that we want to discuss and that might aid in going through this.
Yeah. And the only question I have is for legal staff. Can we ask for a straw vote before going to public comment?
No.
So what we would just do is we'll just do a, just keep asking questions and go through and then we'll go to public, then we'll come back through the matrix.
Or you go to public comment now and come back into the matrix.
Okay. Let's go ahead at this time. I'll go ahead and open, well, let's just see if there's any questions from the council on the, at the beginning. If not, I'll go ahead and open public comment.
Hi. My name is Jill Widem and I'm a resident here in Sonoma and also a six-year cancer survivor of colon cancer stage three. In addition, I'm a volunteer ambassador for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm here today to speak in favor of the tobacco retail licensing ordinance to help protect our youth. First, thank you for your interest and the work that you've all done on this matter and the opportunity to speak on behalf of this ordinance. Tobacco remains the leading cause of preventable death here in the United States. And the tobacco industry will stop at nothing in their attempts to addict new tobacco users. Like all of us, they know that if people do not begin smoking by the age of 26, they're likely to never start. So really, as parents and community leaders, it's our job to protect our youth and to protect the community we live in. Tobacco consumption and the tobacco retail licensing should include e-cigarettes as these devices contain liquid nicotine and heavy metals. The manufacturing of these devices and their nicotine levels are not regulated or controlled by the FDA as are standard cigarettes. Our children are influenced by convenience in their access to tobacco products, by prices of tobacco products, and marketing of kid-friendly flavors such as cherry, bubble gum, and watermelon. I'd like to focus on the convenience and really let you know that one-third of illegal tobacco sales take place within 1,000 feet of schools. I'd like you, I'd like to urge you to protect our community youth by prohibiting the sales of tobacco products within 1,000 feet of schools, playgrounds, and other youth-sensitive areas. Please do everything in your power to discourage our youth from smoking and prevent youth access to tobacco products. This begins with the tobacco retail license. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
If you could state your name and where you're from.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Pam Granger with the American Lung Association of California. Good to see everybody, the familiar and the less familiar faces. So as a refresher, the discussion of updating the city's tobacco control policy started about this time last year. It was introduced, two aspects were introduced by two different members of the community. One of them, who's on vacation tonight and, and doesn't regret being on the way to Hawaii, was really concerned. She came to y'all because she had just read a report about emerging tobacco products. And she was alarmed by the nimbleness of the tobacco industry that was developing these products to circumvent FDA regulation and state tobacco control. For instance, there didn't used to be grape-flavored and pina colada-flavored little cigars, but as soon as you couldn't have flavored cigarettes except for menthol, well, where do these come from? So she wasn't the only one concerned about youth smoking rates in Sonoma County or adult rates for that matter. Perhaps you're familiar with the Portrait of Sonoma County. We heard a lot about it towards the end of last year, groundbreaking report that really highlights things that relate to disparities in health. And one of the population-based suggestions that they made, and I, and I put that on the front of a packet that we handed out to you, I'm sorry, late today, was to highlight a renewed effort toward reducing the rate of tobacco use in the county as a whole. And one of the very successful ways to do that is with the tobacco retail license. Tobacco retail licenses have been shown to reduce youth uptake. So if we can start, if we can stop kids from starting, then down the line, we're going to have less of the problems logically that create disparities in health in our county and elsewhere. So the American Lung Association released our State of Tobacco Control Report just last week, gave that to you. On the top is just a summary of the Sonoma County grades and it gave you the shining color version of the entire report. But you'll see on it that the city of Sonoma doesn't look really all that great, but the, okay, not good at all. But that's just because there haven't been any policy updates since the mid-'90s with the, the policy that you're contemplating, moving head-on, and second-hand smoke protections this time next year, you're going to look really fine. So thank you very much and we're around if you have more questions and in the future too, of course.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Emerson and I live at Sonoma Meadows. And I also happen to be working in the public health field in the Bay Area. And over 100 communities in California have enacted these similar ordinances, the tobacco retailer licensing. And typically, they do so because the, there are merchants out there who see a fine as the cost of doing business. And it isn't until they absolutely lose their license that they finally stop selling to kids. And we found that out in Marin County when we looked at the repeat offenders. Every year, we would serve, survey the merchants. And what happened was after we enacted these tobacco retailer licenses, ordinances, that we got the, the use purchase rate down from 46 to 5%. So it took a while. It wasn't done in one year, but as far as the merchant, you know, the compliance, but we got there. And we, we've been aware of cities receiving a lot of applications from the vaping industry wanting to set up these vaping lounges for these, well, we call them nicotine delivery toys that are candy-flavored and, and they, some of them look like regular pens and parents and teachers don't even know that that pen that their child is sucking on is sometimes the equivalent of a pack of cigarettes candy-flavored. So we really commend you for moving forward on behalf of a lot of people that couldn't be here from my neighborhood, for being proactive in, let us know how we can help. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Jo Williams and I'm a resident of Sonoma, also a parent here. And I just want to be brief and echo what other people have said. You know, the research is really clear about both e-cigarettes and youth uptake. The more availability that you have for tobacco sales, the more likelihood that you will have new users. But I did want to speak specifically to one provision in this ordinance, and that is the, that the fees will go back into educating the merchants. And I think that's a really good idea in that most of the tobacco retailers or all the tobacco retailers do not want to lose their permit or lose their license. So this is a provision, I think, that reaches out in support of, of the tobacco retailers to help them continue to comply with local laws. So I just wanted to point that out. Also wanted to point out something in your packet, which was a survey that was done in countywide by the Department of Health regarding the public's acceptance of a tobacco retail license ordinance. And the, the local survey indicated that there were 86% of the respondents were in favor of a TRL. So I just wanted to point that out as well to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tiffany Neff and I'm also a local resident, businessperson, and parent here in our community. I'm involved in such groups as the Chamber of Commerce in Kiwanis. I am also a cancer survivor and I'm here to show my support for the passing of a tobacco, tobacco retail licensing ordinance here in Sonoma. I echo what the other speakers have said before me. I do want to emphasize that I think the e-cigarettes and the little vapor containers are of particular concern and they do really lend themselves to being attractive to young people. And because unfortunately, our laws here in California are so weak, we are relying upon our local city to, to be tougher in this regard. So thank you for your consideration and please do what you can to help protect our youth in this community.
Thank you, Tiffany. Any other public comment?
I'm really lucky to be here and I'll explain that in just a second. I'm Henry Mathis, 16 years here in Sonoma, never going to leave, and I'm a grandfather and I'm a recovering smoker and 36 years now. 31 years after I quit, I got a aortic, let's see, abdominal aortic aneurysm. Smoking can directly damage the walls of your arteries. There's no doubt about this and it makes them more likely to bulge, hence an aneurysm. It also includes, increases your risk of high blood pressure. And unfortunately, it's very often fatal if there's a burst. So I'm really lucky to be here and I appreciate everything you're doing to help our youth not become another Henry in 31 years. Like others in my generation, I fell so victim to Joe Tobacco and Marlboro Man. Cigarettes were available at every checkout counter at every place you went. And, but now they're new faces and they're new products and they still marketed to the youth. You know, that, they've got to hook you early. We've seen these products are still available and readily remarketed to the popularity of what the youth sees today. And I know all too well how difficult it is to stop smoking. I still say I'm a recovering smoker because it's still kind of, you know, you walk by and you smell it and you go, oh, you know, it's, you're hooked. That's all there is to it. So what a, really 90% of smokers were addicted at the age of 18. I started at 13. I was not the brightest kid on the block. What is decided here tonight and in subsequent sessions can help save the lives of our city's youth. And that is the most heartfelt message I could ever express to you. And I, I want to help reduce teenage smoking by making these products more difficult to obtain. And I want to thank you for your work that you've done on this important. I want to thank you for your work that you've done on this important ordinance. And more importantly, together, we can all help bring this solution and prevent history from repeating it. Is I'm being buzzed off? I'll go real quickly. I am lucky to be alive. I'm asking you to help me protect our local kids, and I'm asking you for the opportunity for me and for other people, well, I'm a member of the American Cancer Society, and what can we do to help you and help our merchants learn how to do their job in a more socially responsible way? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, mayor and council members, staff. I know you all like to keep in touch with the businesses and what the businesses in our town are doing. And I was hugely encouraged and enthralled, really, to when I heard that CVS stopped smelling smoke, or stopped smelling cigarettes, and at the considerable risk of losing business. And now it seems that they've survived that very well, and that they're also moving in the direction of having more health services. So I commend them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? With seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to council. And as I discussed earlier, we're going to do things a little bit different. You don't have to ask the permission of the mayor to speak, because we're going to go ahead and go through the matrix with staff. And I assume that we're going to start at number one.
Mayor and council members, I'd like to make sure that this matrix is in the context of the big decisions that the council needs to make first, because each one, there's many parts. But overall, the initial decision that the council needs to make in connection with this public policy is whether they feel that licensing tobacco retailers is what they want to do. If they do, if you feel that this is the best approach to the benefits that the members of the public have discussed, then the question becomes, do you want to license all of the existing businesses that sell tobacco, all 16? Or do you want to deny a license to some of those retailers based on certain criteria, such as location, closeness to youth? And if that's the case, or you may only want to deny licenses to new businesses coming in, 17, 18, 19, whatever number ends up applying. So we have to distinguish preliminarily if you want to license, if so, all existing businesses, some existing businesses, any new businesses coming in, or denying future businesses a retail license. And then the last consideration under the big picture is, do you want to sunset existing businesses when they sell? In other words, we have 16 now, and if the council decides that they want to license all existing, or in other words, grandfathering in existing businesses, do you want that license to expire when they sell their business to another person? So those are the big pictures. And as we go through the matrix, those decisions will be made at various points. So those, that's the big picture of this matrix. The public has brought up a very important definition that we have in the model ordinance before you that I did not put in the matrix. I made an assumption, I guess. And that is whether the definition of tobacco retailer would include someone who sells these e-cigarettes. And the definition of e-cigarettes that I have used was based on the model ordinance, which has now been revised. So there is a new definition, which is more inclusive, because again, as the members of the public have said, the industry is very busy trying to keep ahead, and so what we legislate may not always keep current. But the most current definition is the one I would recommend if the council decides they want to include not only traditional cigarettes, but also cigars and electronic cigarettes.
Okay. Well, great. Let's go ahead, and probably the best way to start is if we do want to enact a retail ordinance in the city of Sonoma. And I do have a question. The county does not have an ordinance in place at this time, correct?
I believe they are in a draft form at this time. It has not, they haven't finalized.
Yeah. So if we could just kind of get council members to do a straw vote if you want to move forward? Well, what we're doing is to see if this is a direction that we want to head.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 So we have a yes, so we have a five to O to move forward with this. And then probably the second one, I would like to get the e-cigarettes discussion going with the council to make sure that, and that I would like to bring up marijuana, even though it's illegal in the federal law. Is there a reason that we don't have, we don't add marijuana to this?
Maybe I can help with that, Valerie. Our current zoning ordinance has been construed by planning staff consistently to prohibit the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries. Right now, only medical marijuana is legal under California law. As you pointed out, mayor, it's illegal under federal law. But planning staff has consistently construed our zoning code to prohibit the establishment and operation of a medical marijuana dispensary in the city of Sonoma in all zoning districts.
Okay. So with that, we'll get a little straw vote going. If you don't mind, we just keep going this way.
Add the e-cigarettes. E-cigarettes to it.
And I am definitely in favor of all forms of e-cigarettes.
Hunley?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, we have a five to O to go forward with adding e-cigarettes into it. And then I guess we'll start with number one.
Yes.
Which, did you want me to read it, or do you want?
Either way, if you want, go ahead.
All existing tobacco retailers would be grandfathered in. However, they would not be allowed to transfer the license from one person to another, or from one location to another. This would result...
Actually, we're going to go off the matrix.
We're going to do the matrix.
Oh, okay. You want to go off?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll look at staff for that.
All right. The first decision would be whether the council wants to include not only cigarettes and e-cigarettes, but other drug paraphernalia, which is defined as bongs and hookah pipes and other mechanisms which get nicotine into a human person. Roach clips, this type of thing. There's a, there's a long definition.
Let's go ahead and just do a straw poll.
Let's keep moving, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So my question is, is that it states in here that it would be a violation of state law and a violation of the tobacco license as well? So that's what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm in.
Continue.
And the next would be requiring a minimum pack size. As the members of the public have mentioned, if you have a minimum pack size, it's less likely a young person would purchase this type of thing.
Okay. Well, I'll weigh in that to let, know that I would, I would not want to enter into that.
Okay.
Councilmember Edwards? Oh, councilmember.
I just want to make sure that these are the cigarellos that we're talking about?
We're talking about cigars and cigarellos and...
Yep. The cigarellos are cigars, but they're, they look like cigarettes. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So for me, I think the definition is here, there's also some laws around cigars, correct?
Yes. State law requires a minimum pack size for only cigarettes. They do not require a minimum pack size for cigars, cigarellos, tipperillos, little cigars, blunt wraps, or cigar wraps.
So I am in favor for just not having the single pieces. This is the encroachment that youth is actually making, and to deter that particular principle, that's why I would vote for that.
I would agree with that as well.
So I noticed in, I guess, 725-120I, when it's talking about the pack size, and then it, it seems like it's a little more complex, like if it's over $3 and you can have one, and then if it's whatever the consumer packaging is, so, I mean, so to require that is including all of these five things listed here, is that correct? Okay. I support that.
Okay. We go, we have a four to one, so we'll continue.
Now we're going to start looking... Excuse me. Now we'll start looking at the various locations where existing retailers may be grandfathered in, but new tobacco retail licenses would not be granted. The first location is bars and restaurants.
Well, before we start, and this is why I kind of want to start at the other end, because I think, to me, it makes a big difference how the council feels about one, two, three, four, and five. Because I have a, I have a huge problem with number one. And if I knew that number one was, was going to be thrown out, I would probably be more in, I would probably, I would probably have my vote would, would be a little different. And what my concern is on number one, is I don't like the fact of telling a business that they cannot do business as usual when they base their whole business plan on that.
I wanted to sort of raise a general point of discussion. For me, it would be a little easier if maybe we could have a broader discussion first. For example, for me, it'd be easier to decide which of these that I want if we could clarify what our objective is here. In the staff report, it said that the aim is to, what was it? Reduce the sales of tobacco and smoking paraphernalia to minors. So I'm wondering if that's what we all agree it is, or if there's anything additional. Particularly, I'm thinking of things that seem like they affect adult smokers more than youth. So for me, deciding sort of what seems to have a nexus to the youth versus what's sort of separate, it would be easier for me to decide.
And I think that's a good point, and that's why I want to leave the discussion where council members could just speak, because I don't want to be calling on people through this whole thing. I think what I would like to get out of it is, I would like to see people not smoke. But I think tonight, it's really geared at not, not having the youth. And my main objective is enforcement. And that's why I'm so, I am for the retail license, because it's a way of getting money so you can enforce. And that's why the discussion with city staff earlier today was to make sure that this does get enforced. This is, sometimes things come to the council, and then they don't get enforced. This is one that I would like to get enforced, and I'm looking at the targeting of youth, pretty much, and not destroying business at the same, same point. And hopefully, as things evolve, people will do the right thing like CVS.
I, Rachel, I appreciate what you said, and I think you basically said somewhat of the same thing, Mr. Mayor. But you know what? The death is in the details.
That's the way it goes. I mean, you know, we, I think what you're saying is the philosophy, or what are we really trying to seek? So maybe it's unfortunate, but possibly we do have to go through these. I don't know.
Well, no, I do think that we need to go through all of these, but when, when I was at the last meeting, when the council decided they wanted to pursue this, I felt that they didn't decide what their objective it is. So for me, it's hard to pick what the law is if we haven't first agreed what we're doing with the law.
And that's what I agree with.
Yeah. And I guess the big question is, are we telling 7-Eleven that they can't sell cigarettes? Are we telling 7-Eleven that you can continue doing business as usual, except for these criterias?
Well, I think we're deciding if our objective, agreed objective, objective is protecting youth from being able to access cigarettes, then that's it. And then as we go through these, we can decide, well, this is related to that, this one's not, and then...
But we're not answering, we're not answering the big question. And the big question is, when it comes to businesses that sell cigarettes, can they sell their business if we put this ordinance in place? And that changes my vote a little bit different, because what I don't want to do is I don't want to sit up here, and I don't want to kill the business models and the...
Transfer.
The transfers.
Right. Right. That's, those are the big questions, mayor. We have the question of, do you want to license existing businesses, all of them? Do you want to allow those existing businesses to sell those businesses to another person and let the second person also sell tobacco, if in fact, they are located right next door to a school, or a library, or a playground, or the other locations that we can discuss? Those are the important, big overriding policy considerations that the council needs to make. And then, after those initial decisions are made, we can get into the details, as Council Member Agarmenti mentioned.
If I can, if I can jump in. So when and if there's ever a smoking ordinance in town, that'll change the value of some of those issues as well.
Yes. I know that that will be coming at a different time, not because they're unrelated, it's, it's because of the additional complexity of having the council try to make all those decisions in one evening or two.
Do we want to skip this one and go on down, come back to this?
Okay.
If I could just say one thing. It helped me tremendously when we took the categories of transferees and just, and just took that out as a block altogether, and kind of moved on, and somehow come back to it later, just for me to kind of model down my, you know, my opinion. So when it says transferees in the subject, I'd like to just go over that until we...
Skip it for now?
Until we come down to the weeds.
I think, I think that is an easy way to go through, rather than just line by line with the ordinance. The first way I think the council can get a handle on this is to deal with what locations, if any, you would not want to see a new retail business. So that's one question. And then, after we decide that, would the council want any existing businesses in those locations to not be granted a new license?
Okay. Well, I would start by saying that I wouldn't want any new businesses to sell tobacco. We have 16. I would not want to see any, any new ones.
I agree with that. I would go along with that as well.
So are we, do we start with schools? Are we doing all of the youth populated?
I think the question currently is whether there would be any new retail licenses granted.
Within 1,000 feet of any youth populated area?
In the city limits.
Oh, in the city. Okay. And this is until it gets under 10? Or is this after we get under 10, whether we would give a ninth, a 10th one after we get under 10?
You could, you could decide if you wanted to sunset up, down to a certain limit, and then continue granting up to a certain limit. Or you could just say, look, we have 16, we want them to sunset. When they sunset, we don't want new ones to take their place. That's the policy decision that's...
Well, I saw that the, I guess the recommendation is to have less than one per 1,000 people, which is why our recommended number is 10. So I would be personally okay with keeping it as 10, so as it goes down below 10, there'll be open spots.
All right. Is that the straw vote of the council, that in terms of keying the number of new retail, well, the existing is 16, but if it should go below 10, the council would, would permit a new business to apply for a retail license to sell tobacco?
I think because of the size of Sonoma, I would like to see no new ones. If it went down to nine, it would go to nine, eight, seven, six, and hopefully, the county would follow our lead. And so I would, I would not want to...
Yeah, until it gets down to none would be fine.
Because I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're trying to do, and I don't want public to think that I'm a bad person up here. But I'm trying to do this, at the same point, I want to respect our businesses that, that have business models, and hopefully, they'll adapt and change their business model over time when they can. So I think, how did you guys feel about?
I would keep it at 10, and then as we go under, we could grant new licenses.
I have to say, I'm looking, zero would look mighty nice.
Madeline?
I'll go with zero.
Okay. We have a four to one on that.
All right. All right. And then the question is, I believe the council has, has decided this, but the existing businesses, if they sell their businesses, that's a different question. Would you want an existing retail seller to be able to sell his or her business to another person and have them be eligible for a license?
In the same location?
In the same location.
Yes, I, I would like to see that.
Yes, provided they had zero violations.
Yes, again.
I'm right on board with Mr. Edwards as well.
I support being able to transfer, transfer their businesses.
As well. Okay. Yes.
That's a five to O.
Okay. That makes it very, much more helpful. So if that's the case... So if that's the case, then the existing businesses would be grandfathered in. And if there is to be no new licenses issued, we don't need to go location by location, business by business, because the council has given overriding, saying, all we want to do is license the existing businesses to make sure that they apply, pay a fee so that it can be enforced, and things can be checked. They can be checked periodically during the year to make sure that they're complying and not selling to minors. And if they sell their business, the new business owner would be eligible for a license, again, provided they aren't selling to minors and that sort of thing. But there would be no new businesses coming into Sonoma to sell tobacco. We would not make them eligible for tobacco license.
Yes, but the only problem that we have is one of the council goals up here, I believe, by listening to my colleagues, is about e-cigarettes. And can you explain how e-cigarettes, hookah, how those laws go? Is that 18 years old?
The Food and Drug Administration hasn't dealt with that, but I believe that there's a state law that is pending that is making e-cigarettes a violation for people under 18.
State law is currently 18.
18.
Yeah, California.
In California.
Okay, so the ordinance that you just explained, so we would be protecting the 18-year-olds or younger, and during the enforcement, those establishments would... And can we go through that really quick, how that process works? If there's a sting operation, how that works?
The first violation, whether... Let's assume that the violation is selling an e-cigarette to someone who's under 18, or not asking for identification for someone who looks 27. If there's a violation, the first violation, they would be... Their license would be suspended for 30 days. Second violation, their license would be suspended for 90 days. Third violation, their license would be suspended for six months. And a fourth violation, their license would be permanently revoked. Now, there is an alternative process, which would permit them to be suspended for only one day, provided they pay a fine of $1,000.
I would not support that. I think time is what... I think what we want to do is we want to make sure they're not selling to minors, and their employees aren't selling to minors. Lori?
I... You know, obviously, you can do your best in this city, and they could go elsewhere, all right, and purchase items. My question is online sales for e-cigarettes. What are they doing for that? Do you see someone in Sonoma, they've got an e-cigarette, and where do you go then?
I don't think that the local retail licensing ordinance addresses sales online, or outside the city limits, for that matter. They could go up Highway 12 and get cigarettes there, if they were inclined to do so. We're limited by our jurisdiction.
Right. So, I mean, we know that there's... You know, they could just say they purchased it online, but we have a method of enforcement to make sure that they actually did purchase it online versus, you know, checking our licensing on an annual basis? No?
No. Normally, what is done to enforce tobacco sales is somewhat similar to alcohol sales. They have a youth decoy who goes into the stores and tries to buy a cigarette, and if the cigarette is sold to this person, and that person's under 18, that's a violation. And this ordinance doesn't allow us to arrest anyone at that point, but that tells us that there's a violation, and it would be, at that point, they would be... That would be one violation.
Okay, I understand this. I just want to make sure that... Our hope would be that there are no e-cigarettes in Sonoma, but, you know, more than likely, it could be possible, and we're just doing our best to protect. I want to make sure that that's not a message that we're not enforcing either.
I have two last questions. On the end, you have the additional options not in here, and one of them is prohibiting flavored tobacco. So should we discuss that now? That's something we would want to include, because I personally would like to include it.
Yeah, because the other question I had, too, is when it came to the council earlier, we were actually talking about advertising. Are we going to get into that tonight?
We can get into the requirements of sign restrictions for retail tobacco.
Yeah, because I would like to, because that was one area that I saw that was pretty important. Because I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to stop youth from smoking, and we're trying to get impulse buying of tobacco products.
Is that a straw vote on the...
I support the sign also.
Sign, okay. And flavored tobacco?
Yes.
And what about prohibiting coupons and discounts?
Yes.
I was reading about this, and it seems like there has been a number of lawsuits around the whole coupon situation. So a question I had generally was, I mean, of the things that we're throwing in there, are there things where, you know, we might later have somebody come back and, you know, try to challenge?
The most recent challenges that I'm aware of dealt with pharmacies. Specifically, Safeway in San Francisco sued because they have a pharmacy in their store, and the San Francisco ordinance prohibited selling any tobacco where there was a licensed pharmacist. And the ordinance was upheld by the court, and now Safeway doesn't sell tobacco in San Francisco, anyway. They do in Sonoma.
All right, the last question I have. So I read recently that Hildsburg has raised their minimum age to 21 to purchase tobacco. And I know that that has not been a part of this discussion before, but I was wondering if anyone else is interested in talking about that, because the thought of raising the age above high school is really appealing to me.
I guess at that point, I'd have to look at the city attorney to see, is what Hildsburg did, raising from 18 to 21, is that legal?
I don't know of any law that would prohibit raising the age, because the state law only preempts when we try... If we tried to lower the smoking age to, say, 16. We can make it more stringent, we can't make it less stringent.
Because I do a straw poll on that. I actually thought that was brilliant of the city of Hildsburg to change from 18 to 21. But with that said, I do still have an issue on the single cigar. Single cigar. Because you're actually gonna... I mean, that would ban... That would ban... When you talk flavored, I know a lot of people think flavored means that you're talking about e-cigarettes, but you are talking about cigars. And that's where I'd like to get a little clarification from staff to make sure that cigars flavored, you know, rum-flavored cigars. It sounds like that's something that we would be ousting.
I think if you wanted a cigar, you'd want a tobacco-flavored cigar. I mean...
Well, that's what I was...
I mean, cigars aren't part of the...
Well, I think...
Cigars... The model ordinance provides a minimum pack size for cigars, and... Which would mean you can't sell a single cigar unless the retail price exceeds $3. The thinking being that minors would not buy one cigar for $3. And the other requirements in the model ordinance plugins would be any number of cigars fewer than the number contained in the original container, meaning, take a pack of cigars, and they break it up and sell it, so it's easier to get to minors. So basically, it would be required that each package of cigars contain at least five, unless you're selling a single one for more than $3.
That's the question is...
The ordinance on cigars... The definition of a cigar is, it has to be tobacco. It has to be any substance containing tobacco in any paper or wrapper designed for smoking or ingesting. For the purposes of this, it includes the things I mentioned, cigar, cigarellos. It does not indicate whether it's flavored. That was something that was an add... That's a possible add-on, that you could say, we don't allow selling flavored cigars.
Well, I'm actually going the other direction. I don't want to...
Sell... You want to sell...
I want these establishments to be able to sell cigars. And if they're flavored, and I think I'm talking a little... I mean, I actually am talking a little bit about cigarellos, I guess, but the $3 rule would probably... Would protect, I think, what the council wants. But I don't want to wake up tomorrow and find out that we banned selling cigars. Because they're flavored. Most of them are flavored. Well, not all of them, but...
So is there a way to get to the... Because I'm thinking of e-cigarettes, and all of those liquids are flavored, you know, like...
Watermelon.
Apple pie, and whatever. It's all, like, clearly geared towards a younger market, so, I mean, do what people ever separates cigars from everything else? Or is it too complicated to do that?
You know, I don't know if the tobacco industry is flavoring cigars. I don't know.
Well, and that's what my question to staff was. What is a cigar that is flavored? Because I was told that cigarellos were considered as a flavored tobacco. Yes.
Just in case it needs to be on the record. So cigarets are small cigars, often broken up, can be bought in many flavors. Grape is a real popular one. There's chocolate. There is, you know, rum flavor. There's pina colada. You know, it's just a plethora. So if I... I think, if I understand right, Mayor Cook, you're wanting to... If they were the old fogey stogie, or, you know, the Cuban special, now that we may be bringing those back in, it wasn't your thought to regulate those so much as these...
Correct.
You know, the little ones? And I think that there's the capacity to generate the language that you want to do that. So that to... One thing is to regulate no small singles, and a separate thing is to have no flavors, and just spell it out in electronic smoking devices, and things under $3, or...
And I think the $3 one, but I just wanted to correct for the record what we were doing there. And before...
I think it would be helpful to have some discussion about the council concerning flavored cigars. It sounds like the mayor would like to exclude flavored cigars from being banned, that those could be sold within the limitations of the $3 limitation, and the five cigars per pack, all of that. But in terms of just of an overall concept, the mayor seems to be interested in allowing flavored cigars to be sold.
Yes.
Is the rest of the council on board with that?
I would support banning all flavors, not making any sort of categorical differences.
I agree.
I would say traditional flavors, and do a little research on traditional flavors of cigars. If you go back, I just pulled it up online real quick. I don't really have time to read it, but I think there might be some traditional things that have historical...
Yeah, because remember, now we're targeting the 40, 50. You know, we were talking about changing from 18 to 21, which I agree with. But now, we're... And we got to remember that, because I know people elected me, and not just saying I would do something just because I was elected, but you have to look at, you know, sometimes things sound great when you're sitting here on the council, and every... You know, everybody in the audience right now is, you know, pretty much thinking the same direction. But there are people out there who like to smoke a cigar. And what the council is saying, you can't buy it in Sonoma. And the county of Sonoma is saying, well, we'll sell you all the cigars we can a mile down the road. You're killing your businesses. And that's where it's kind of coming. The easier that we make this, and then if the county... Hopefully, the county will follow suit, and we can be back on an equal playing field. But if we just go too far, then everybody's just going to buy their cigars. And then greenhouse gases, Lori.
Mayor, you make it so easy for me. I remember my Uncle Herb, and I would have paid money that he would have smoked a cherry cigar, just to have a flavor other than what that cigar was. So I can tell you that there is, you know, a difference in that particular area. I'm... I think I'm in support of both the mayor and Councilmember Edwards to get a little bit more information on this before making a decision. I myself have never smoked a cigar, because I remember Uncle Herb, and there's no way that I would ever endeavor to do that. So I don't have constituents that smoke cigars either. So I think it would be something where I need to be educated on. I'd like to go one more thing, and that's, I'd like to get back to the 21 conversation after we finish this.
I think I'm counting at least three votes to get more information on flavored cigars. Okay.
And just the brief information I pulled up here, it's... They treat cigars more like wine. These are just tobacco, and they have flavors of different things. The type of tobacco that's grown, the ground that it's grown in.
Yeah, I confess that I'm not an aficionado, but I do know there's a magazine about them.
All I know about cigars is my little brother won one at the Petaluma Fair when we were, like, eight years old, and it was about this long.
Wow.
And we made him smoke it, and he never smoked them again.
Poor child.
Well, I can only say that I am not... I never smoked, don't understand it. But if we were discussing Cheetos, this would be over in 20 minutes, because I am an expert at that.
So we'll continue.
Okay, returning to the 21-year-old discussion?
And so, I can see the beauty in having a 21-year-old age limit, because they would have a California ID card that says you cannot purchase alcohol or tobacco, okay? It's a single identifier, and I can see the beauty of that. What I don't know, that I can actually see, is the return on investment for actually trying to get enforcement. So that, to me, is a big question. It would be great to have it, but is it going to be able to be enforced? And I... That's where I am in that situation.
I would think it'd be able to be enforced. 18 or 21 really wouldn't matter. I would actually support the 21, because, like I said earlier, when Hildsburg did it, I thought it was brilliant, because I think that's what we're targeting, and that makes it a little bit easier. When somebody's over 21, it's hard to tell them they can't go to the bar and drink, because they're... I mean, they're 21. When... After you're 21, if you want to go smoke a cigarette and be an idiot, that's probably something that you have the right to do, in my mind. And what I don't like is the fact that we would limit people from that.
I would go the opposite direction, and I'm really not in favor of that, because Congress can send somebody who's 18 to go get shot at in Iraq and Afghanistan. I just... I feel that people are... Given the opportunity to be adults at 18, they're going to be adults.
Well, the reason I support it is because there's 18-year-olds that are still in high school, so it's easy for kids that are in high school, or have friends that just graduated who are 18, to, you know, legally buy tobacco products that way. So sort of raising it, even if it wasn't all the way to 21, even if it was 19 or 20, I just feel like sort of getting it out of the high school range is beneficial.
I have to really see how many people this would impact, I think, in the city. I think businesses would... Might have some sort of blowback on this, because this would cut a certain percentage that they're legally authorized to sell to within the state between the ages of 18 and 21. So this is something that I would like to have more information on.
Yeah, so if we could just give direction to staff, it sounds like to look at this. And I did like what Rachel said. I would like to have maybe staff look at that a little bit. Getting it out of... Because at 18, if you are still in high school, the chances of giving it to a 16-year-old are probably a pretty... Lot better than a 20-year-old giving it to a 16-year-old.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask one question for clarification. I wanted to know about... We were talking about single cigars, but I know that there are single cigarettes that are sold as well. So within that ordinance...
Single cigarettes cannot be sold.
Well, they're sold on the streets.
Well, they might be sold illegally on the streets, but there are laws against that.
Oh, there are? Okay.
You can continue. I think we were talking about advertising was what I wanted to look at.
Right, we're going to bring back to council the provisions regarding signage restrictions for retailers. We'll be bringing back information regarding the... I will be bringing back information regarding the age, raising the age potentially above eighteen, between eighteen and twenty-one. We'll be giving the council more information on cigars. But I believe that we have enough direction to take our next draft and get that in front of you.
Yeah, thank you for looking at this. I know this is a hard one. So does the council, before we close this item for discussion, have any other direction for staff? If, if not, I'll go ahead and close this item. And we'll move to seven C. Discussion and consideration of the two thousand fourteen, fifteen City Council Goals Progress Report. City Manager?
Do you guys need a break? You guys want to take a break before? Are you guys okay to continue?
Okay, City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook. Members of the City Council, tonight I'm presenting a progress report on the status of the council goals for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. On May fifth, the two thousand fourteen, the council held a goal setting session which resulted in the adoption of seven goals for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. The seven goals include thirty-one key elements which define the work areas. These goals were used as guiding principles for department managers in preparing the two thousand fifteen city budget and are used by staff as, as a roadmap of priorities for this fiscal year. The progress report included in your agenda packet demonstrates the city remains focused on accomplishing the goals set forth by the city council. The two thousand fourteen, fifteen, seven major categories include balancing city character, which includes four key elements, fiscal management, which includes five key elements, infrastructure, which includes eight key elements, policy and leadership, which includes five key elements, public service, which includes three key elements, recreation and community resources, which includes three key elements, water, which includes three key elements. In your agenda packet, beginning on page eighty-one, is the individual update on each of those elements. And overall, significant progress has been made on each of the goals. Of the thirty-one total key elements, twenty-three are either in progress or completed through the six month, the first six months of the fiscal year. At this time, I wasn't specifically going to go through each one of the council goals, but I am here to answer any questions with regards to the council goals. But again, I'm proud to bring this report to you, and I give credit to all city staff who have responded to making these goals a reality for you.
Okay, we're back to Robert's rules of order. So does any council member have any questions for city staff? If, I actually have one before, or did Vice Mayor Gallion?
No.
Oh. One thing I would ask is, when we do our council goals, can we put them next year in the order that we had instead of going alphabetically? Just that way, public can see that, you know, what, what, what the priority was. It's my only request.
Yes, if you would like to set a priority, as you recall, we, in the discussion, we didn't set it priority because I think that we discussed that all of them were a priority for the council. So, but yes, certainly in your, in your next goal session setting, if you wish to prioritize the goals.
I would like to see it if we had council support.
Yeah.
And we can decide that at the council.
Yes, exactly. That would be certainly something we could, we could do.
Vice Mayor Lori Gallion.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to commend staff. David and I are, are here. We're the testimony of blood, sweat and tears that we know that staff has gone through to go ahead and tie everything that they do to our council goals. And I just want to say that we have seen the return on that investment. And I look forward to another year in our, what will be our third year that we've been doing this process, to go ahead and actually give us the roadmap that I think effectively coordinates council along with department heads, along with staff, to go ahead and affect what is a better opportunity for the public. I'm especially looking forward to, if we decide to wrap it around or whatever in future, to have some public dialogues about our balancing of city character. So I just would like to put that in as, you know, something I would like to see.
Councilmember Hundley?
Just wanted to also say thank you to Carol and the rest of the staff that's not here. I've certainly enjoyed getting to know you all in the last year, and I'm excited to be a part of the new goal setting session and see what we can put on this list for next year. So thank you.
Edwards?
So I met with Carol this morning, and already Dan Takasaki came back to me with questions we have on the new playground and just the, the attitude and sincerity of, of all the staff members. And now being elected to council, gays keeping me in line, and it's just great how, how everyone works with this group. I'm sure everybody has the same experience. And I look forward to continuing. I don't, it doesn't make any difference because I, I agree that they all hold equal weight. We have to have our finances together, otherwise we don't, can't really do anything else. But I think it's, I think it's fine the way that it's laid out. You know, and with what Ms. Gallion brought up about the meetings and so on, Carol and I discussed the town hall meeting format, that sometimes in a room like this, it's difficult for people. It's, it can be intimidating. And maybe, you know, we work on doing things at different venues in West Side, East Side, Community Center, you know, whatever type of venue, school, that we use that opportunity to have these town hall type discussions. So.
Thank you. If I don't have any other questions for staff, I'll go ahead and go out to public for public comment.
Good evening, city staff and members of the council. My name is Chris Hassan. It's A-H-S-A-N. I live at six two nine Fano Lane. And I wanted to, well, in reference to the policy and leadership section of the progress report, just in the council goals, I should say, I wanted to state my support for the idea of an impact fee on new housing developments in Sonoma, as well as some version of a broader inclusionary requirement for single family homes and developments with four or fewer units with an alternative in Luffy, as was discussed at the last planning commission meeting. We know for a while that affordable housing is a big problem in Sonoma, and it's, it's troubling to me that ninety percent of the service and service workers and local public employees have to commute from out of town to work here in Sonoma. You know, one example is I have a couple of friends who live in Vallejo who have to commute all the way to Petaluma every day for their jobs when they would rather live here in Sonoma County. And these people are an important part of Sonoma's economy, and some of them play a critical role in disaster relief of, God forbid, when the, when that time comes. Impact fees are a policy that have worked fairly well in places like Santa Rosa, Sebastopol and other cities throughout the Bay Area. I know the developers in the housing sector, well, a lot of them at least, won't like this. And I'm sure their representatives will be talking to each of you about this soon. But, you know, they say this is a supply problem, and we've been hearing that argument for a while. While I respect their expertise in the business of housing development, there's one thing I know, which is that we will never satisfy the endless demand for a high priced housing in Sonoma County by building our way out of the problem. I think sooner or later, we have to make affordable housing a priority by requiring developers who get to make a huge profit by building in Sonoma to shoulder their fair share of the responsibility in solving this problem. In addition, I think it'd be nice to use every tool in the bag to sufficiently address this problem, including policies like stronger rent control programs. And then the last thing I'll say about this is, I know you all hear quite often that the public does not support the idea of vertical rezoning. And I agree with them. Public character is important, but even if we didn't care about that, vertical rezoning doesn't solve this problem because it only drives up the value of the land, further increasing the cost of building. So I'm glad to see at least a couple of these issues, and I hope we can move forward on them.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? If not, I will close public comment and come back to council for discussion and, and, well, I guess just a little bit more discussion. Is there any more discussion on this?
None for me.
Okay, and this is a non-action item, so we'll go ahead and we'll move to seven D. Discussion, consideration and possible action to set a work session for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, City Council Goal Setting. City Manager Jivinato.
Yes, thank you. This is the next issue now of looking at your, setting a time for your goal setting session for fifteen, sixteen. As Vice Mayor Gallion alluded to, in the past two years, we've convened in a conference style layout which allows for a kind of direct dialogue amongst all council members. Basically, the format is a roll up your sleeves format facilitated by myself as a city manager. And it really works very well, I think, as, as both the mayor and the vice mayor will attest to, where goals are submitted ahead of time from council members, from city staff, and, and goals are solicited from the public. And then it really is a work-study session where there is a really good dialogue and, and really foresight and discussion of what you want the, your goals for fifteen, sixteen to be focused on. And this really sets the tone for city staff in, as a kickoff to the, putting together the next year's budget. So what I'm looking for is for, for you to pull out your calendars. I'm proposing, and hopefully the week of March twenty-third, we set this up as an afternoon session. We hold, we convene it in the EOC, which is the room next door, the Emergency Operations Center, and it is a public meeting. It's open to, you know, is open, we advertise it. But again, it, it is in a conference style format where you really can roll up your sleeves and, and have a good dialogue. So if it works for the week of March twenty-sixth, we would look at a one o'clock or two o'clock in the afternoon start time.
So.
About a two o'clock on the twenty-fifth. Does that sound good?
I would love a Wednesday personally.
Wednesday? I'm good any day that week.
I'm actually good on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. Councilmember Agamonti?
Fine.
Okay, and what time were you talking about? You said.
Two o'clock would be great. You have rotary on Wednesday.
I'm fine with two o'clock. Is everyone else fine with two o'clock? Okay, let's go ahead and take a two minute break while I put this in my calendar. I'm not tech savvy. Okay, with that, if we don't have any other questions for staff, we'll go ahead and we'll go into seven E. Discussion, consideration and possible action on the potential county movement to seek legislation to increase the sales tax cap by two point five percent. City Manager Jivinato.
All right. Well, I will give you a brief overview of this item. The Sonoma County Transportation Authority Board initiated this, basically a limited discussion is, is what I'll call it, on the potential movement by the County Board of Supervisors to seek legislative action to increase the countywide sales tax cap by two point five percent. So basically, there is a current cap of nine and a half percent, and it would increase it to twelve percent overall. And that is due to the upcoming county roads maintenance sales tax measure and the decreasing capacity remaining in some areas of the county. So I had a discussion with Suzanne Smith, the executive director of the SCTA, and she noted that basically the increase would not impact the proposed county road tax that's coming forward, but the measure would affect other taxing entities if they go out for a future tax increase. So essentially what SCTA is trying to do is they've asked staff to bring back this item for discussion at, at each of their respective councils to see if they can get a, a read on what council's support level might be for this legislation that may be brought forward at the county level and to kind of give feedback to their SCTA representative, which is Vice Mayor Gallion, as to whether they would lend support to the county for the county's move to seek state legislation to increase the cap. The unfortunate part of this is, is that is all the information I have for you. There is no information supplied by the county. And so, you know, that is why the staff report is so vague. It is just at the talking level at the county. I can't supply you any good advice or information.
So my packet wasn't missing anything?
Your packet wasn't missing anything.
That was a big question over the weekend.
And in my, and in my discussion with Suzanne Smith, that was really my question to her is, what can you give me? And essentially, all she could give me was the sales tax rate by comparison, which is the only other thing that's in your, that's in your agenda packet. So the issue before you tonight is whether this council wishes to give any kind of direction on whether they would potentially support legislation that might be brought forward by the county. And I know that's a lot of ifs and mites, but again, I have no, I have no background information for which you could make an informed decision on this issue.
Thank you. I think Vice Mayor Lori had a question.
Well, I, I just want to tell you that I sat at the meeting, you know, how this all happened, and all the directors are sitting here, and we're supposed to be approving for our climate authority, our transportation authority, what our legislative outlook is. Because it's direct staff, you know, lobbyists, things of that nature to go ahead and do this. And, and the last item under there was advocacy for a legislative cap to go to twelve percent. And so every director was sitting there. We were sort of like blind. And we're all saying, well, you know, do we really want to go ahead and do this on our own as directors, or do we want to bring this back to council? And it became unanimous throughout the entire board that they wanted to go ahead and bring it back to council. Because there is a lot of conversation around this. And we had the library tax. We had, you know, possibly the transportation tax. If you go and you look at the city of Cotati, where they are in their sales tax, everything is starting to encroach upon this level. We would not be the first county that would be going to twelve percent. There are other counties even as close as the East Bay. I think Alameda or whatever has already approached this. So the, the question, you know, we have many people who have sales tax measures that sunset, and they sunset at all different times. But that doesn't necessarily make for a very clean deal to understand what it is when it goes out to the voters, why this area might be for it, this might not be for it. And it doesn't really give it a fair chance if there is a measure in which the people really want to support. So that's why they're looking to see, you know, is that going to be the, the role of where we're going and where we're spending our time.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Gallion. Not to be confused, we'll add that into the, to city staff report. Does any council members have a question before I go out to public?
Well, I just wanted to ask Mayor, Vice Mayor Protem. You know, depending upon our decision, I understand the, the role that you're in, but I guess my, my question is, if we can't come to something tonight, you know, how, we don't have the information, whether it's sunsetting, we don't have any of that information. So how does that affect you as a committee member?
I would just go back and say that my council is, has not decided in this issue. They gave us very little time. We had to come back by February ninth. And the reason is, is that if they're going to approach the legislature, there's a window in which they can pass the bill.
And, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Well, I, I just wanted to make a comment. I would imagine if they had more money to spend on staff so they could get this information to you and all of us, instead of what I think is deplorable, the reporting, the reports that come out of that group that are bound. I don't understand that. They're like books every month. Who pay, I mean, okay, I'm sorry. Who pays, I mean, okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that I'm your alternate, so I just wanted that to be known. I can't believe that they bind these reports.
Councilmember Edwards, do you have a question for staff?
Why do you think they need more percentage in tax? I mean, it's, to me, I mean, this is, you know, how many times are we going to pay for the Golden Gate Bridge? I mean, it's, I can't see...
What I'd like to do is go up, if we don't have any questions for staff, I would like to go to public, and then we can come back with our comments. I'll go ahead and open up public comment.
Thank you. Hi, Ted Sexer. So I'm really asking a question here, but I'm not sure why it is that we want to go to income tax. Econ 101, income tax is regressive tax. You know, people with low income pay more, even though that is, you know, even though the basics of life aren't taxed, even so, the low-income people pay more percentage of their income than the higher-income people. So I'm asking that question. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? If not, I'll come back for council discussion, and this is an action item. But I'll start out by saying that I totally agree with Councilmember Edwards. I don't think that we have enough information. I do know the library had the issue when it came up, that if Major M. would have passed, the state legislature would have had to make a change. And I have to say that we just pay too many taxes, and there is no way I would ever support this. So if you, you can go back and tell at least that one of your council members said no. So...
I mean, I'll just add that it sounds like this effort to bring this back is more like a lobbying effort than anything else. It smells just like a lobbying effort to me.
Councilmember Hundley?
I personally wouldn't want to make a decision on this without having more information.
And I'm still getting used to protocol, so I apologize for my outburst, but I'm not taking my comments back, you know. Thank you.
I will forward your comments.
Thank you.
I just, I just think I've heard basically that due to a lack of information and also two strong opinions against, that I would say that the city of Sonoma would not be supporting this particular action.
If somebody's going to raise a tax, it's going to be the city of Sonoma, and it's going to go in the city of Sonoma coffers because we know how to spend our money. With that, did we do a motion?
I just want to add that this is, I mean, this is floating a balloon. That's all it is. And I think it's basically, I mean, to me, it's a waste of our time.
Yeah.
And I don't, I think as our representatives, that next time, just take charge and say no.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I made that motion. I was going to say, in the form of a motion, I would say that our council is not in support of this action.
And I'll second that.
Okay. City Clerk, could we get a roll call? Vote?
I just needed to get the motion down. Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallian?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. With that, we'll go into our last discussion. Item is 7F. Discussion, consideration, possible action providing direction to the mayor regarding the city's vote on appointments by the City Selection Committee and the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association at their February 12, 2015 meetings. City Major.
Thank you, Mayor Cook. Essentially, the title of this agenda item basically says exactly what it is. At your meeting on February 12th of the Sonoma County Mayor and Council Members Association, there will be a number of appointments made to countywide committees, and there is a list in your agenda packet of a number of the committees and the council members from various cities that have stepped forward and are requesting support. And essentially, it is for the council to give direction to their mayor, who sits on the City Select Committee on each one of these appointments.
Okay. So with that, we'll go ahead, and this will be an easy process. What we're going to do is, if you look in your packet, under City Selection Committee, Airport Land Use Commission, there's two appointments, but we can pick from Sam Salmon from Windsor, who's an incumbent, Gabe Kearney from Petaluma, and Dominic Fappali from Windsor. I would like to say that my selection would be Sam Salmon and Gabe Kearney. Is there any...
I would agree with both of those.
Okay.
Agree.
Then Bay Area...
No, that's what we're doing, right?
Oh, then we'll, so we'll go out onto public, we'll go out to public on the airport land use...
I recommend you just open the entire item to public comment.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll go ahead and open public comment for the entire list, and I'll go ahead and close that and come back to council for discussion and action. So we had Airport Land Use, Sam Salmon and Gabe Kearney. Do I have to do a roll call vote for that? Okay. Okay, Bay Area Quality Management District, we only have one, which would be, so I'm going to go ahead and continue it, and we'll vote, because there's only one, unless a council member would like to add...
And you're going to leave the public hearing open through all this, correct?
Yes.
You did close it.
No, I closed public comment.
They commented on everything.
They commented on everything, and then I closed it. So we have Bay Area Quality Management, Teresa Barrett, Petaluma incumbent. Golden Gate Highway and Transportation District, Gina Beaufort, Rona Park incumbent. Coastal Commission, North Coast Representative Alternate, Sarah Glade Gurney from Sebastopol, incumbent. Local Agency Formation Commission, Mark Landman, Cotati incumbent. Metropolis Metropolitan Transportation Commission, Jake McKenzie, Rona Park incumbent. And Remote Access Network Rand Board must be filled by a mayor. There was no letters of interest. My recommendations are for these, the ones I just named. And for the remote Rand, I have no idea. We'll just leave that blank, I guess.
Well, I'd like to recommend, if possible, that the mayor, should someone be nominated from the floor at the meeting itself, go ahead and use his judgment as to whether that's appropriate for us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll go into Mayor and Council Members Association Board of Directors. ABAG, Regional Planning Committee, we have just one, Julie Combs, Santa Rosa incumbent. North Bay Division, LOC C, Executive Board Alternate. That is only one, so I'll have, I'll open that up for discussion. We actually have Dominic Fappalo from Windsor and Chris Albertson from Petaluma. I actually would want to pick Chris Albertson from Petaluma, unless there's discussion on the council.
I would agree.
Okay.
As being part of the executive committee, I think he would be a great fit.
Sonoma Moran Area Rail Transit, SMART, Board of Directors, there's two appointments. Carol Russell from Cloverdale, who's an incumbent, Jake McKenzie, Rona Park, who's an incumbent, and Erin Kastrom from Santa Rosa. My choices would be Carol Russell and Jake McKenzie. Is there any council member comments?
I would like to at least raise the consideration of Erin Kastrom, who is a very hard-working, intelligent person, and I know that she wants Santa Rosa to have a voice on that board, so I think she would be a great addition for it.
Is there any other discussion?
I would just like to say that, sitting on the transportation, that Carol Russell and Jake McKenzie have been there from the very beginning. Both are very strong in their particular heads on that particular board. I do feel that there's action maybe in another two years that I'd like, I think Erin would be appropriate for at that point. I know another member will probably be going off. But right now, we got to get it to go to Cloverdale, and Jake is very powerful in MTC, and he has been most beneficial on that particular board.
Councilmember Agamonte, do you have any comment on that? Okay, I'll go ahead, and it sounds like we'll go for a vote on that. That one, we'll probably need to do a vote.
Okay, so this is a motion or a vote on Carol Russell and Jake McKenzie? Is that what you want?
Yes, because two, we had, we had two say yes, and I didn't know...
You want to just do name by name?
You want to, let's go ahead and just do name by name.
Vote with Carol.
Just do all, all two of them.
I would be happy to have Erin come on, but I do agree that we need to get the train to Cloverdale and whatever it takes to have continuity.
So you have a majority there?
Yes, we do have a majority on that one, so we don't, so I guess what I'll do at this point is go ahead and call for a roll call vote on everything that we discussed through the whole item and selection process.
I will, I will make that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Motion to ratify his appointments.
Motion to ratify his appointments.
City Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallian?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. With that, council members' reports and comments?
Quick report, I met with the Cheetah Slow Group, circling back around to that, and I think I talked them off the cliff. They were having a discussion about getting involved in city planning and other things, and I said, well, why don't we organize the group first? And I had a very good meeting. We have a couple of folks from Sebastopol coming over, and we're going to have another meeting on the 19th and continue moving forward and hopefully build a group and put Cheetah Slow back into action.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Sure, thank you. Well, I toured the central landfill site, which is unbelievable. I think I'm very interested in waste management. I come from a sanitation district, so I'm really pleased that I'm on this committee. Also, that includes the compost operation, and I think I'll be seeing some folks at Blue Wing for the, on Saturday, for the roof, to repair the roof. And my office hours are 11 to 12 tomorrow on Tuesday.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hundley?
Thank you. I had meetings with the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, the Sonoma Valley Economic Development Steering Committee, and the, as the Sonoma Valley Library Advisory Committee as an alternate, and the mayor couldn't be there. No news to report, except for with the library for the rest of the month, they're having a winter book bingo for adults. So if you like to read, you can pick up a card and read books, and then you'll be in a raffle. So I've read three books so far, so my name's in the raffle. And if anybody would like to meet with me or talk to me, please email me or call me, and I would love to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gallian?
First of all, we've gone through quite a few things. We've been to Sacramento. We've gone through quite a few things. We've been to Sacramento. We bonded as a group. We did our training, which I thought was fabulous. I just wanted to say, that was a very inspiring and informational training, and thank you to city manager for keeping us all in line. I went ahead, and there were several events that the mayor and other council members have attended throughout the few weeks, and I just wanted to say, it's been a pleasure to see the council either totally there, or, you know, just minus one member, which to me has been fabulous and a support for community. So I wanted to say, it's, everybody's making an extra effort to go ahead and actually be part of the team, which I think we're doing well at Blending. We've had, you know, many events. We've had the League of California Cities at Ramminkins. We've talked about many issues that are going to be coming forward this year. And I think it's important that, you know, we are doing our goal-setting session at this time, because there are going to be several challenges. I basically saw in our huge binder that we get from the Transportation Authority that we have a lot of issues that we're tackling on climate. There's a personal thank you that's happening to all the members who were part of our team for putting our climate plan together for 2020. And if you have the opportunity, I would check in on the website to actually see that. We had three members from the city of Sonoma that actually participated in that, and it is probably going to come out a little bit later in spring, some of the results that we have there. The other issues we went through is basically how we operate. And when we got our inaugural address and we saw that, you know, the governor has some very different, very succinct climate objectives within his address, it's important for us to be out there sequestering whatever dollars we can, as well as opportunities within our communities. We are, we are highlighted in many aspects. I just want to say, I heard reporting going to Washington DC and our recognitions there, but in my Ag and Open Space meeting, of which I stepped down his chair to give Steve Robitowitz the opportunity to be able to do that, still, I am on the executive committee. I had chills going up and down my spine talking about our representatives that have gone for our LIDAR, which is basically our vegetation tracking that we do through satellite, NASA. A room filled with engineers. This is just an incredible opportunity to be sitting here in this county, knowing that these stellar, stellar projects are there. The Department of Energy is in there, and having this person travel not once but twice as part of their opportunity. We're on the map, and I'm glad to say that I live in Sonoma County and that we're recognizing that we're moving forward in that goal. This morning was water. Water is challenging. This is another year of drought that we are going forward with. I think my question was, you know, what do we do? How do we address, how do we speak to people, you know, on this particular issue? What is it that we need as talking points for the public in this? And I think it turned into a very healthy conversation about what we have been doing in the past and the inroads that we have made in conservation. We are still at stage two, as far as our water is concerned. This still means that it's the Monday and Thursday night watering, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That has not changed, and it will not be changing until there is some other order that might come forward. The state is definitely looking to all communities. There's a great need. We understand that the governor is going to be releasing some dollars around drought, but applying for those dollars is going to be very competitive. And we have some of our best stars there in the water agency. We are not at capacity in Sonoma. We have had no rain in the month of January. There has, in San Francisco, there is no record for that ever. So we are not out of the woods. We are in another year of drought. It is our fourth year of drought. And we will be coming back in our, we have a budget meeting in March, we'll have a meeting in April, to go ahead and actually discuss some of our strategic goals. So as we go through our goal-setting issues, all right, it's very important to be talking about those measures. Carrie Pollard was thrilled to be able to announce the transition of toilets in a particular community. What we don't seem to have is the momentum of the lawn turnover as much as we do some of the other areas. But between our Sonoma County Energy Independence Program and with what we hope to be building into a water conservation budget, maybe this is where we turn the curve this particular year. So I just want to say that they are, they are fine-tuned. I asked for the Water Foundation, which was, reported Lester Snow back in last year to come back. I want to understand what the metrics are and how we all will be working to an evaluation system. system that is both fair and equitable up and down the state, but more so, you know, how we can start implementing this in, in terms that people actually understand. When I go back to where I started on this in 2009, and I look at the acre-feet of water that we got in our community and where we are now, this is greatly reduced. And I just want to say, if the former mayor, Rouse, I should say it's the honorable Rouse, Tom Rouse, would like to come back and do another rain dance, I would be most welcome. And with that, I just want to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day, and thank you again. If you have not had the chance to tell someone that you care today, go home and do it.
Councilmember Edwards, you had another?
Just wanted to add that I think we all attended the Al Cadessa event.
Yes, and I was going to.
I don't know if you were going to bring it up, but I have my, I know you don't have your pink dot, and I think you need to make sure you get that pink dot.
Most definitely.
I hope everybody has one on council.
Most definitely, and thank you for bringing that up. The council did go to the Al Cadessa last week, and I was proud to report that all five of the councilmembers, and one thing that you'll see this year, that's probably different than most years, is I will bring the council up whenever I'm in public and they're there, because I want the city of Sonoma to know who their elected officials are, and let them know, you know, welcome. And Marcy has a little pet project, which is a great project that Councilmember Edwards was talking about, the pink dot, to be an organ donor. At this part point, I'm not, but I will be. Once my office staff isn't sick, they're going to help me fill out the paperwork, and I do urge people to be organ donors, because I've, I've read a lot about it, and it's, I think it's an important cause, and it would really make our Al Cadessa, Marcy Waldron, very happy, and many people who receive the benefits of those organs. And I would also like to report that I went to a facilities committee along with Councilmember Edwards, and we did talk about, at least to the youth center, on 136 Mission terraces that we will be bringing back to council. So I would like to report that that meeting did take place. And I do want to say, did you want to, you wanted to add something before him?
You're not closing, are you?
No.
Okay. I'll wait until after you finish.
I did want to say that the weather does say that we're going to get five inches possibly on Friday, so we should probably be a little careful. I think some reports are five to 12 inches, but I would think, hopefully, we get five inches. And the last thing until, we'll let Vice Mayor Lori Gallion speak, is if you're on the two-yard line, you run the ball, you don't pass.
That's a, that's a fitting end. I just wanted to say that uppermost in my mind tonight, and I'm just so excited about it, is that I would like to possibly, no, I would like it put on a future agenda, that we revisit the leaf blower ordinance. And I have had a particular outcry from a few groups to go ahead and do that. So in a possible future agenda, if that can be considered, I would like to make my notification now.
With that, we'll go to the city manager comments and announcements, including announcements from the successor agency.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook. Just a couple of quick items. There will be a public meeting on Wednesday, February 4th, at 6:00 PM in this room to present and receive public input on several alternatives to alleviate flooding on First Street West between West Spain Street and Depot Park. This possible flood project is proposed modification of the Prop 1B grant-funded city watersheds project, which is being managed by the water agency and co-sponsored by the city and Sonoma Ecology Center. So we'd like to receive public input at that meeting. And then, secondly, the Sonoma Police Department, along with the Identity Theft Council, will be presenting, presenting an identity theft and scams seminar on Saturday, February 7th, at 10:30 AM at the Veterans Building. It is a free seminar, and we'd like to invite residents to come and learn ways to protect yourself from this serious crime. So a couple of public service announcements.
Thank you, City Major Jivonato. And now we'll go ahead and go out to public comment, and thank you for waiting through this whole long meeting, which actually has only been three hours long, so.
No, I enjoy it, actually. Patricia Cullen, and I'm speaking as the president of the Sonoma Valley Historical Society. As you know, we filled out the form for the Preserve America's Community, but I also had a couple other things to tell you about. We applied for and got a grant of $5,000 for wayfinding to direct visitors and residents to the Depot Park Museum, to the Overlook Trail, to the historic cemetery, to the area, the historic area north of the park. I think it's really important that everyone understands that there's a lot to do in Sonoma, and also, we're using the bike path as a unifying connector. It will also have directional signs to Vallejo's Home, which is, I have to say, that people come to Depot Park and they think, to the museum, and they think that they're at Vallejo's Home. So we're kind of redirecting, having signage. We're going to put in two maps, so that was funded by the TOT and a private grant donor. And also, the Historical Society has put forward two grant applications or letters of inquiry to the Impact 100. One of them is the whole $100,000 grant for the restoration and preservation of the city cemeteries. I think that that is something, we have a valuable resource there for lots of reasons. A lot of the people who visit the Depot Park Museum and our archives are looking for information for their family members at the various cemeteries, and it's pretty deplorable. The city does the best they can with the amount of money that they have for that, to care for the cemetery, but we would like to do more, and we've proposed those grants. We also asked for a planning grant for replacing the platform at the Depot Park Museum, also owned by the city, and that would provide for engineering and all the necessary pieces and parts, so we could go forward with fundraising. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? If not, kidding, I saw you coming.
I'll just, real quick, just because you guys brought it up, I just want to mention it. You brought up the county sales tax that might be going through in June. I'm, I have a bunch more numbers I'm going to bring you guys, and trying to do a little cute presentation. Hopefully, there'll be more people here. The Board of Supervisors voted to earmark 10% of what they're going to, what the county will receive from that tax if it passes, to fund public transportation, and so I will be asking you guys to consider a similar thing with the money, because cities will get portions of that money. I don't know how much of that will be. I've got some idea of what that, what we would receive from that. It's probably going to be a little over $300,000, depends on how they divide that up. So I will bring that up with some better numbers, but I just want to bring that up so you guys have the, know ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Jack. With that, no other, seeing none other public comment, I'll go ahead and close this meeting.